Thank you, AGB. All right, thanks very much for that short recess. We're back and we're on to item C2, Discussion of our Fiscal Year 1617 Program Objectives Associated with the Adopted Goals. I will turn that over to staff for that.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, the purpose of this item is to get final public and council input and recommendations on the city's fiscal year 1617 budget year objectives. There are some important routine items, just sort of as a reminder, that are not on the objectives because they're routine and ongoing. So, because something isn't on the objectives doesn't mean we're not doing it. It just means that it doesn't need to be emphasized this year perhaps because it's going okay. And also note that based on public and council input and the staff review, there was certainly concern, which we all appreciated at the last study session, about the number of objectives. It was 105 then. And so, based on your input, based on public input, based on the staff looking at it, we've called some of those out. And so, they're not included in this present -- in this, in the current recommended budget objectives. However, they are in the presentation. They're in the staff report. They can be -- you can add them back in. And they can also be considered sort of at mid-year during the annual budget review to see how we are and if we can add additional things in. I should also note that at the -- on the table in the back of the room, there is an updated draft of these objectives. There are three objectives in green on that draft that were updated from the staff report. Just a language change, so three that are different from the staff report. And I'll note those as we go through. And then, the only other change to the staff report is the last four pages were organized a little bit better to identify which objectives were -- that are not included were taken off when. Quick update on the process. So, we are at -- we have completed two study sessions on this. And we are now in discussion of regular council meeting. And our hope is that we will get enough input tonight that we can have actually put on consent for next council meeting or can be put on a regular item for discussion. But hopefully, we'll get it close enough tonight that we can get approved next week. And it's important probably to put that on context because the objectives then drive the advisory board work plans. So, the staff department heads and their advisory boards are sort of standing by waiting to make sure that we know what our objectives are going to be for next year so they can start to put together their work plans. The staff also needs to be putting together their budgets. And then, we get into our 10-year budget forecast on March 22nd. And then, the council and the staff developing the budget for this year. So, it's important that we get through this in a fairly timely manner, not just tonight, but in the month of February, so that we can continue on with the rest of our strategic planning and execution process. Those are 10 city goals. They are unchanged. And then, we'll start right through. And I'm not going to go into huge detail on these. This is the third time you've seen these, and the public who has been here has seen these. Also, I'll note that we've been updating the website with every draft. So, goal number one is the water reclamation facility. There are no changes to the objectives for this. So, there is page one, which includes public participation in the process, acquiring the property, completing a master plan, completing a master reclamation plan, completing an environmental review, applying for the construction loan, seeking additional Prop 1 water bond grants, considering annexation requirements, getting a decision on the type of construction delivery method we're going to use, releasing an RFP for construction, issuing a contract for construction. Two points with Cayucus, one to, at the appropriate time, get a final decision from Cayucus on if they will or will not be participating in this project. M is working with -- to begin to work with Cayucus on the disposition of the existing wastewater treatment plant property. And then, N is the courtyard transition, determine how we will transition the courtyard and if we will and how we will. And then, perhaps the -- well, in improving influent quality is to bring to you, to research, bring through the WRFCAC, bring through the PWA likely, ideas to improve our influent quality, reducing salt specifically to make -- to reduce our cost of treatment. Mr. Mayor?
Great. And with that, we have any questions for that particular objectives?
I had a brief question. I really should have asked it at the WRFCAC meeting earlier, but Mr. Levick probably understands my question. So, on the goal number, complete the master reclamation plan. Is that what Mr. Woodson was asking council to do?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that with him, but I didn't get a chance. Okay, great. And it is on the goals for the --
Yeah, I would say a lot of the discussion at that joint meeting was around the master reclamation plan. And that is ongoing, as you see. So, we'll be working on the master reclamation plan this year. And it's not necessarily an essential item to understand in order to choose a site.
Okay, but we're addressing it. Okay.
And the only reason we're not working on it now is we're waiting to see about a Prop 1 grant because that time wouldn't be reimbursable if we start work early.
Can I just comment on that? To your comment about Mr. Woodson, I also -- there's goal number nine, D, One Water Planning. We looked that over, and I think that's probably even more meeting what his needs and thoughts were and what the city should be doing. So, it was a great discussion. Thanks for bringing that up, and it looked like it was addressed.
Okay, so then, we're actually covering both bases on our reclaimed water and our water, One Water.
Yes.
Which I know is now going to be One Water. But at any rate, I understand there were two things moving forward next year that will deal with water.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Mr. Buckingham.
Okay, goal number two is to improve streets. There's two slides here. A is a street summit. This is a change from the study session last time. We heard your recommendations and changed this into plan and execute a street summit to inform residents and work various street improvement approaches, including financing and a possible funding revenue measure on the November 2018 ballot. But this says to conduct a street summit and see where things improvement -- improving streets comes out of that. Traffic calming is unchanged. 41 and Main Intersection funding is unchanged. Traffic signs and traffic markings are unchanged. Bike needs, as noticed in our last study session, we included several of these specific projects from the bike needs list, the Citizens Bike Committee, into this objective. So, their input is incorporated by a number of specific items into this objective. And as long as we're on it, Matt Bishop and his amazing team completed the patching of the Class 1 bike trail past the high school and around the Cloisters area. And Toast is going to start slurry sealing Thursday and Friday of this week.
Tomorrow, actually, they'll actually start. And Matt and his crews did 16 tons of asphalt over the last two days.
Great.
So, we'll actually be able to cross one of these things off before we even get it approved. Bike lane painting is unchanged and construction timing is unchanged. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, goal two. Any questions, comments?
I do have a comment, and I want to laud Matt and the crew because I was running through there yesterday, and I stopped, and they were busy doing it. And it looks great, and I thank them very much. So, I want to thank them also here.
Great. Goal number three.
Okay, goal number three is our planning process. That green is horrible up there. So, this is one of the ones that's slightly modified. You asked last time to include some of the specific sort of performance objectives for this. That was a great point. So, this now says to continue work on the general plan, local coastal plan update, completing the alternatives analysis and administrative draft of the blueprint, green print, and administrative draft of the program EIR while pursuing robust public input in the entire process. Then, the zoning option we discussed and was last time is unchanged. C is changed slightly. I should have actually had -- well, it's not changed from the staff report, but it's changed from the last study session. So, this now notes that the Rugetti property could be the site for the water reclamation facility. And if the WRFCAC should recommend and you should approve the Rugetti property, then we would want to complete a master plan of that property in this coming year so that it syncs with the facility master plan. So, that would be a site master plan for the balance of any property that is not part of the water reclamation facility. Wireless ordinance is unchanged. The downtown waterfront strategic plan unchanged. 2016 building code is unchanged. Mr. Mayor?
I'll start off with a couple of questions. So, objective A, can you explain that a little bit, I mean, just from the standpoint of completing alternatives analysis, administrative draft, and blueprint? Thank you.
They're all components of the proposals updated general plan. So, those are all items that'll be coming and being completed over the next year. So, those will be -- those are measurables. And so, you should be seeing that we're making progress in the general plan update process. These things will be done within that next year, year and a half period, and you'll be seeing those ticked off. We're done. We did this. We released this. We got the final version of the, you know, of those items. So, you'll be seeing those come forward.
Okay. Any -- Resolution 1815 was the resolution adopted by council to update our general plan in two years. Any interest in incorporating that resolution into the goal just for flavoring the objective? Any discussion or any comments on that? So, the Resolution 1815 is the resolution. You understand? So, yeah.
I'll just say we haven't included references to resolutions in any of the other objectives.
Okay. And then, can I finish one more? I was practicing what Barbara did a minute ago. I'm not done. The downtown waterfront strategic plan, consider incorporating -- I don't know why we'd need consider in there. I think we were committed to incorporating the downtown waterfront strategic plan. That was been an objective. So, I know it's a language thing, but I just wanted to have that clarity.
One way or the other, we're going to do that. The question is how -- I mean, what we're trying to do is do incorporating it into the general plan update process. You get economies of scale that way. You already have a consulting firm that's ramped up and doing work. So, that sort of getting up to speed money that you're spending for a consultant, we don't have to do that. They already will be up to speed. And we'll have been involved in outreach processes. This can be incorporated into. I haven't gotten, you know, a -- we're still finalizing the contract right now for the consultant. Once we get that done, we'll be looking at maybe amendments to the contract to incorporate that. I haven't done that yet because we haven't finalized the contract.
I think I understand what you said, though. Instead of consider, you've already said to try to do it. We can change the wording to work to get it done.
Sure.
Got that.
Okay.
We'll make a minor adjustment there because we've already all agreed that we're going to try to incorporate it into that contract. We need to -- we can change the wording.
Thank you. Christine, you had some comments?
I think I totally understand where you're going with the resolution. I know, I understand the flavor of it. But here's what I wanted to say. I think the reason that the staff's come back with A is because we wanted to see specific accomplishments, measurables, in this one-year plan of the two-year plan. So, it sounds like they've pulled out these, which will be accomplished in the first year in keeping with the resolution of the two-year timeframe. So...
Perfect. I like that explanation. Thank you.
But the flavor is always good of resolutions, Jamie. We know that.
Any other flavors to discuss? None? Okay. Goal four.
Okay, goal four is public safety. It is on one slide. Speed survey is unchanged. Marijuana ordinances are -- ordinances are unchanged. Good Neighbor Campaign is unchanged. Public Safety Scrub of the Morabey Municipal Code is unchanged. Strategic Plan Implementation is unchanged. And slightly changed is public education. It really is just to clarify the measurable. So, this says to provide three CERT training sessions for the public and multiple hands-on, hands-only CPR presentations with the goal to educate 100 citizens in CERT and 500 citizens in hands-only CPR. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, goal four. Any questions, comments to my right, to my left? Moving right along. Goal number five.
Goal number five is fiscal sustainability. The two is on one chain -- or one slide. Budget forecast is unchanged. Budget transparency is unchanged, and there was great discussion about that in the previous item. Appreciate that. CFAC review, actually, good discussion here also. That's unchanged, and this is to review the execution of the CPAC in the -- CFAC, excuse me, in the first year. Community Choice Aggregation is unchanged. Budget policies are unchanged. Vehicle replacement is unchanged, and rec programming is also unchanged. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Any questions to my left, to my right? Great, we're on a pace here. Next up.
Next up is economic development. It is appropriately on three slides and not only because the font is bigger. Goal number -- or objective number one is the Title &amp; Trust Lease Management Policy, and that is unchanged, as is Economic Development Strategic Plan. The Morabey Power Plant has been refined slightly since the last study session. This is not different from the staff report. But I'll just highlight and note that this says to consider providing proactive support, including a possible memorandum of cooperation to any entity pursuing demolition, remediation, and redevelopment for non-energy-producing purposes of the Morabey Power Plant property. Essentially, what this now -- this used to be a placeholder, and what it now says is to consider, not to do it, but some level of support memorandum of cooperation with any entities that approach us or approach Dynegy with an interest in demolition, remediation, and appropriate redevelopment. And energy production is not an appropriate redevelopment as outlined here. This would not preclude the Trident Project because the Trident Project is not on Morabey Power Plant property. So, that's the way we tried to word this. Business information on the website is unchanged. Business incentives are unchanged. Real estate commercial -- commercial real estate inventory is unchanged. And Erica Crawford, sitting in the audience, is already our partner on this. Aquarium Project is unchanged. Business Improvement Districts are unchanged. Economic Development Code Scrub unchanged. Maritime Museum. Marine Services Facility, just to highlight that the Marine Services Facility Boatyard is clearly on the goals and objectives. And then, Tourism Integration and Food Trucks. Mr. Mayor?
Questions to my left, right? John?
Mr. Buckingham, on, let's see, C, six C. Would that also include the consideration of not providing support? Should we be not linked in a positive way with an entity that was working to redevelop that property? In other words, this says consider providing proactive support. I guess my question is, does that assume that if we don't support it, that automatically we would provide a non-support?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if somebody approached me and said, hey, we want to talk to you about stoking up the power plant again, and, you know, we want to add, you know, we want to go back to burning oil, or even we want to do some super clean energy-producing thing, I'd say, no, thanks. No, thanks.
Right. Totally understood. But even if it were a project that didn't include that, but something else that we were not interested in supporting, it would also mean providing a non-support letter, I guess, or recommendation?
We don't specifically say that we would do a memorandum that we're not going to support you. And if there were any consideration of a memorandum of cooperation, that would be approved by the city council. So, you would have the opportunity to discuss whether or not you want to provide some level of cooperation with whatever entity it is based on what they are proposing.
So noted. Thank you.
Any other questions? None? Okay, good to go.
Okay. Number seven is improve infrastructure. It is on three slides as well. The Market Street Bluff Centennial Parkway area revitalization is unchanged. And as you know, we started that two weeks ago. We started bringing that out to the council two weeks ago. Implementation of concept plans also unchanged. ADA compliance improvements. We slightly reworded this from last time to specifically note that these improvements would be based on the ongoing ADA compliance assessment. So, we're doing that assessment right now. And then, this would be perhaps, if approved in the budget, $50,000 of actual improvements based on that assessment, which will certainly be a lot more than a total requirement of $50,000. Signage and branding is unchanged. And I'll just take a moment here on this one. We would like to be doing this today, but like other -- and I think many of us would. But like many things, we don't want to start doing things and then do them wrong. So, what we want to do is first go through, start the general plan process, the vision, values, mission, the downtown waterfront strategic plan, and get our branding straight, and then go out and do new signs and branding, not let's go put up new signs and then figure out in nine months that actually we want a different logo or something like that. Improved trash collection and public restroom cleaning is modified from the last study session. We added public restroom cleaning based on council input. Tree trimming is unchanged from the last study session. Community beautification is unchanged in the last study session. And again, the Community Heritage and Beautification Committee priorities, some of those are included in this objective. Ash fencing is unchanged. City Hall functional improvements provided a little bit more detail there to make it clear that these are functional improvements, leading hopefully to improve customer service and specifically what the space is there in City Hall to be worked on. And then, the facility maintenance program is unchanged. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions to my left, to my right? I have one question. We had a brief question. Mr. Smucker brought it up on sidewalks earlier during the mid-year budget. And Mr. Buckingham, you and I discussed a little bit about sidewalks. And based on our conversation tonight during mid-year budget, you're describing the ADA assessment that's already in play. And my question was, that particular assessment will evaluate the conditions, then we'll be able to prioritize all those. And, you know, I wrote down in my notes, you know, prior to our conversation for -- to address sidewalks and the issue of itself because obviously, in our mid-year budget, we were talking about, hey, let's do $60,000 for sidewalks. And no different than our pavement management plan. We've got a plan. We know what the overall cost. We know what streets and everything. So, with that ADA assessment, could that be folded into basically an assessment that we, through a -- through PWA, establish a sidewalk maintenance repair program and bring to council an implementation strategy for budgeting purposes? Is that -- do you think that's already something that's going along with that ADA assessment? Or would this further implement the strategy to look at it in a way that we're looking from a budgeting standpoint, how many -- how much we have to do and how much we would invest every year? And I guess that's also a question for council on that.
Yeah, I guess with -- if the council wants to specifically emphasize sidewalks this coming year, then -- and I would not disagree at all with that. Then, so I'm not pushing back at all, then I think we could add, I just ask the liberty to, we will craft a sidewalk objective that fits, that achieves what I think you want to achieve, and then include it in the final recommended objectives list. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think for the council conversation and basically the good conversation we had just previously in the mid-year budget discussion, you know, we discussed the ADA assessment. But at what point are we able to take all that data and look at it and say, okay, we've got good stuff. Now, let's -- now, we can -- now, we know what our five-year plan is or two-year plan or whatever it is, and here's our -- how we can implement it into the budget. That's what I'm looking for.
I understand. I'm being cautious because the staff has gone through a pretty detailed drill of what staff resources do we have this year to actually accomplish things. Discussed this one briefly. That's why I would prefer not to craft the objective right now, the words for it. And I would probably tie it mostly to the upcoming budget process to say something like, consider, like we did with ADA improvements, consider X number of dollars of sidewalk improvement based on the ongoing sidewalk assessment. Something written that way, we've got the staff capacity, I think, to do that. I would be comfortable adding that.
Okay.
I would -- I think the council should discuss that.
Absolutely.
Because I am concerned about adding in the 30 things that we've taken out over the last -- over the last two weeks.
Right.
If I might just add a little bit to that.
Thank you.
So, the ADA assessment, working with our consultant and our own staff to assess these facilities, will include public rights away, public buildings, hardscape on park surfaces. So, it'll have the full mix together, not separate it out. But it'll prioritize that list, which, where you have the most risk to make those improvements. And sidewalks would be included in that list.
So, 7C covers that? Is that what you're saying?
Let me get back.
I don't think that's --
Yes, I believe it does because public sidewalks are included in the assessment of cities' facilities.
I got you.
The sidewalks are included in the assessment.
I got you.
7C, however, specifically says $50,000 of ADA, overall ADA improvements. I believe we should, having not seen the assessment, I believe that we should be spending $50,000 likely. I believe when we see the assessment, we will be compelled to be spending about $50,000 a year on ADA improvements besides sidewalks. And so, if indeed, and the way this is written, I'm -- we're going to look at, we're going to do risk. We're going to look at the risk. We're going to look at the list that the contractor provides, what the highest-risk items are. We're going to execute the highest-risk items first. And if sidewalks aren't there, I won't feel compelled to do sidewalks. I'll feel compelled to do the highest-risk items. So, if for the aesthetic, community, visitor-serving feel, we believe that sidewalks deserve a special look, then I would do what you suggested and add a separate objective.
Yeah, you know what? I didn't get the same out of our conversation earlier. I feel comfortable that this 7C will address that.
Okay.
And actually, you know, allow us to evaluate the whole thing, whether it's 50 or 25 or 75.
Okay.
So, I feel, you know, I feel good.
Okay, great.
So, I don't need to belabor that anymore. But thanks for bearing with me on that and working through that. Goal eight, unless there's any other questions. Thanks. Thanks for the help on that. Goal eight.
Okay, goal eight is quality of life, and it is on two slides. Excuse me. Community pool planning and city-sponsored events are unchanged, as is sea otters and pickleball and the rec guide. Vets Hall renovation planning was modified slightly from the last study session based on council comments, adding in some of the words here about working toward a more adding in some of the words here about working toward a more attractive, rentable space for private events. Public meeting broadcast is unchanged. And the community paramedicine is, excuse me, is changed, modified slightly from the staff report. That's why it's in green. And what was modified was to add private, public-private partnerships to simultaneously improve local healthcare access. So for example, we are partnering right now with Dignity Health, and we'll likely have a Dignity Health free clinic outreach here in Moro Bay in the month of May. That's a great example of a public-private partnership to increase access to healthcare. So that's what was added was not just the federally funded stuff, but private-public partnerships. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, great. Any questions, comments? No? Okay, goal number nine?
Goal number nine is water supply. It is on one slide. State water planning, D-SAL permit and location are all three unchanged. One water planning is changed slightly from the last study session, only to add one water before planning in the, in the subject line. And then the CMC emergency exchange agreement is unchanged. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, any questions or comments either way? Good to go. Okay, next one. Thank you.
Ten is improve city operations. It's on two slides. IT support and disaster protection are unchanged. Records management is changed slightly to specifically note to begin digital scanning of harbor records. That's changed not from the staff report, but from the last study session. There's the compensation study that we've discussed. That's unchanged, as is lease management office organization. The Moro Bay municipal code is unchanged. Succession planning and harbor maintenance are unchanged, as are GIS and community resource connections. Mr. Mayor?
To my left, any questions? No? Right? Okay, moving right along.
Okay, I'm actually going to go backwards on these. So these are three slides of items that were, we probably don't need to look at these. These are things that were removed after the first study session and we discussed in the second study session. So we really don't need to review those. But for example, in the, at the first study session, we had Park's master plan on the, on the goals as a recommended objective. And we removed it and noted that in the second study session based on staff resources. Similarly, RV camping areas, we had that on the first time, but removed that and said, let's wait until next year when we do the North Embarcadero, when we consider doing a North Embarcadero strategic plan from sort of Coleman Beach up to the Rock. These items right here, seven items, staff were on the last study session. And as staff went through, based on your input, these are the items that were on the objectives at the last study session that we recommend removing in order to get the objectives down to a manageable level. Manageable primarily in this sense, in terms of staff ability to get all this done this year. Some of these had, had discussion at the last study session. Others did not. Based on the input at the last council meeting, we removed the parking management plan item because we got different guidance during the parking update at the last council meeting. Moro Basin management planning, this is, this may be an important objective in the years ahead, but we believe that the work on the water reclamation facility, specifically the master reclamation plan and letter A underwater, the, the, sort of our future of state water, we really need to do other things to define whether we need to do this and to what extent. So this can, this will likely be a high priority item next year after we've done some more work on the Wharf especially. Both fall concerts and downtown Friday series, there was Council comment on those, whether we had the resources, the priority to do those, and so we removed those. Water conservation is a great example of something that's ongoing that we removed. It's not that we're going to stop conserving water. In fact, we have met our water conservation goals. We anticipate we'll keep meeting our water conservation goals. We're not going to stop using our, our, our public outreach to encourage conservation. So this doesn't mean we're going to stop doing it. It just means that we've met our goals so far, and we don't think we need to, we don't think it needs to be an objective this year in order to keep meeting our water conservation goals. Employee health options and pest management, both of those are recommend pulling off. Oh, I'm, yes, employee health options, we actually talked about. Because we're going to look at the League of California Cities, and they are, in fact, they had a great presentation on this at the seminar I was at last week. The League of California Cities is, is in the process of rolling out their employee health option, their alternative proposal to CalPERS health. And pest management policy, similarly, just based on staff resources. And, and my level of concern at what the risk is, recommend removing that as well. So I just wanted to identify to you before you have your discussion and be very clear about what things are not on the objectives that were on there two weeks ago. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, great. I think at this time I'll open it for public comment. Anybody like to speak to this item? Please come forward.
Hi, David Nelson. I just have a question. It's my understanding that for the power plant on number six, the objective to bring in somebody to redo the site for alternative to energy. It's my understanding that when Duke, when PG&E sold to Duke, that there is a deed restriction saying that only power, the only thing Duke can do with that is to put a new power plant on it. Effectively, PG&E restricted the use of that plant site for anything except power to the owners. City has a right to rezone, of course, but DynaGee, and you might ask, and maybe I'm totally wrong, but DynaGee has a restriction that says they only can develop a power plant there. So to ask somebody to redevelop a lot that has a restriction like that is going to be sticky at best. So if that's the restriction, the only option for that would be open space. So, but PG&E did it for the purpose of cleanup. Because if it's a power plant, they only have to clean it up so much. But if it's open zoning, if you zone it for commercial hotels, you know, residential, there's a big problem. And PG&E is responsible for cleaning that. So as long as that restriction's there, there's only a level of cleanup that goes with that restriction. So that could be a real sticking point to number six. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else for public comment?
Erica Crawford with the Chamber, the Downtown Friday series. I just wanted to put you all on alert that the Chamber is focusing very heavily on their Saturday farmer's market, the community and farmer's market. I'm seeing this as a real foundation-building year for us to kind of set us up to a position where we could entertain maybe doing something like a concert series on Saturdays where that street is already closed. I just want to put you guys on alert. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to Council. Perhaps the Moro Bay Power Plant deed restriction comment can be responded to?
Sure, happy. Thanks, Mr. Nelson. So is correct that there are, that PG&E placed some deed restrictions on the property? They are restrictions of things you can't do on the property, not things that you must do. So it's not that you can only use it for a power generating facility. But there are a number of things such as schools, hospitals, overnight stays that the deed restriction says the property cannot be used for. A future purchaser who wanted to demolish, remediate, and redevelop that property would either have to operate within those deed restrictions or would have to negotiate with PG&E to have those restrictions modified. And PG&E likely put those restrictions in place to limit their, their future liability should, should somebody get sick from, from any environmental concerns there. So the city's clearly aware of that. Potential purchasers of the property are also very aware of that. And in fact, we're aware of some that have engaged with PG&E to have a discussion about having those, those restrictions modified. Perhaps the most important point on all of that is any land use decisions for that property will come through the city, through the Planning Commission and other boards, and to the City Council for your approval. So nothing, on the good side, nothing can get done there without your approval. Perhaps on the, on the downside, there will likely have to be something done there besides open space. Otherwise, it would have to be just a really benevolent, really wealthy person who wanted to demolish, pay whatever the $100 million would be to demolish the plant and leave it as a, as an open space. Does that help?
Great, thanks. Any other questions from Council? Seeing none, you want to move into discussion? How about Matt? You want to start us off?
So far, I think it's great that the deletions are in here. So it kind of gives you a running record, especially those folks watching. And so in terms of doing this, Dave, can you kind of, we're going to be doing this yearly, correct?
That's correct.
And so folks, when you look at some of these items that have been deleted, they can also be brought back in a timely fashion next year. In terms of, this is setting the agenda, so I just wanted to get that clear. With that, that's all I wanted to say.
I guess I'd also just reinforce that when we do the second annual budget review, or I'm sorry, goals review in, in November, that would be a great time for staff to look at how the work plan is going this year. And if we have capacity to add things, that's the first place we would go to recommend, recommended things to add. And there's nothing that prevent, these objectives obviously are not the only things that your, that your staff is doing during the year. There's a, you know, this represents a little bit of all the things that your staff is doing. So as we have the ability to do additional things, this is where, the first place I'd look to say, hey, Scott Graham isn't working hard enough. Let's, let's figure out something else for him to start, for he and his team to start doing. And we'd come to the Park's master plan or, or something else for his, his team to work on.
Thank you.
Christine?
Hi, thanks. Great summary on where we've been the last two meetings. You know, what I realized is in general, we've gotten a lot of mileage out of the first initial 10 goals. We've been able to really, you know, we sat down and did that for, I guess, two, three years ago now. It blends together, but it's been a bit of, a bit of a while with these goals. I think we spent, you know, paid a nominal amount to have a consultant help us with them. And we're still, they're still alive, and we're still realizing that, you know, some of the big jobs in the city aren't going to go away in one year. So I do feel like we've been very consistent responding to the community on the big issues that we're trying to work, work through, and they're not going to be solved in a year. So from that perspective, I think that we've done quite a bit of work last fiscal year, the one before, and the one we're in now on these goals and these, keeping the goals and changing the different initiatives or the objectives under them. So in that case, we're looking at another set of one-year goals to sort of close out this cycle. And you know, I, I would like to hear if Council members have specific items they'd like to be put back in, and my mind's kind of open to that, to hear your input. But honestly, I'm more or less confident and able to move on and get to the budgeting of these priorities at this point. So, thanks.
Thanks, Christine. John?
I would echo exactly what Christine said. I, I appreciate the paring down. My concern in the very beginning and midway through this was that we had just a tremendous number of goals that would tax staff. I think we've pared them down well, and I'm ready to see them move forward. I have no problem with the ones that have been taken out. And they're certainly, certainly there to be reconsidered next year. And so I'm ready to move forward with them and get the budget process moving and, and everything associated with it. So thank you very much.
Noah?
Yes, thank you. And I agree, I think we, we did need to pare down the entire list. The item, Moro Basin management planning, that was removed, I think, is a big one. But I would agree in the timing of that, that getting started this year would be ahead of time. It's always nice to do that if you have it. But I think the process and the product would be much better informed by what we're going to be working on this year and then picking that up with, with that new information. The integrated pest management policy, I think, I think the city's going to need to establish that at some point or another, join the many other cities in the state that have these policies. And considering the environmental sensitivity that we have here with the estuary and our care for the environment, it only makes sense that we would manage our parks and city properties with a special care and a policy that makes sure that we don't repeat what, what occurred I think around three or four years ago now with excessive poison use along the estuary and in our parks. That was, that was not only embarrassing, but disturbing and very dangerous. So that item there, I'm willing to let go because I'm, I guess I'm trusting in staff that they learned a lesson from that and that we would not be participating in a sort of a management program like that in the future and that we can get more formal with the policy when we have time.
Great, appreciate that. I would echo everyone's comments as well. You know, the first iteration of this was a little bit overwhelming. We were looking all like, oh my gosh, as well as staff. So, you know, it was great to throw all the darts up there and then start peeling them off and, and looking at what the score is. So pardon the puns on all that. But, you know, you know, I'm supportive of where we got. And, you know, I would, I would agree with some of the comments. You know, just to comment, Noah, you know, I was thinking, you know, great conversation about that pest management. And, you know, perhaps, you know, if we're keeping an eye on things, you know, with our national, our NEP, you know, maybe there's some, some grant out there that, that might, you know, if we're paying attention, you know, might fall in place. And, and we could just, you know, have that taken care of for us. And, you know, and I know we're all always, you know, paying attention to those things and looking out for, for different things like that. So just trying to be optimistic that, you know, if something like that comes up, that, you know, would pay attention to it. But it's just one of those things that we're peeling off, I think, for the right reasons and, and with a note of caution that you were, you were conveying. So, you know, I'm supportive of what objectives we have, and I just appreciate staff's work. And it was, it was a big start, and it was, you know, great to have it drilled down a little bit. So, yeah.
Great. So keeping score on this, we, what I heard was, oh, actually, we didn't even say to add sidewalks. That's right. So, so I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the caution on how we deal with pests. We'll make sure we don't deal with them dumbly until we get a policy that says, don't deal with them dumbly. And so I don't think we had any adjustments to this. So you should expect to see this on the consent calendar at the next meeting in a memo form similar to last year that refers to our strategic planning framework and talks about the next steps of budgeting.
Great. Any, any other comments?
Great.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item C3. Item C3 is discussion and options regarding public comment period during council meeting. And Mr. Padoni?
I need the PowerPoint put up.
So, I guess this is one of those things of balancing something. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, with my feeling of my legal ethical duty to advise you of the things that I see may be a problem. Okay. The reason this is being brought to you now is because, as my memo said, I have a duty, I believe, to let you know what I think legal consequences could occur to things that I experience. And as you know, January 12th, there was some political speech that was done in terms of a announcement of a campaign. And the council also directed me to bring this back to you, so that's why it's on the agenda. So, to give you some kind of context, the reason that there is being discussed is because the First Amendment and free speech is a very important aspect of all of our lives and our democracy. And the courts have gone out of their way to describe the level of restrictions that a city can place on someone's exercise of free speech. And they've come up with four categories to discuss that, four different fora or forums. The one that is given the highest protection by the courts are called traditional public forum. And those are like your streets and your sidewalks and your parks. The next one is a little bit less restrictive, designated public forum. And that is an area that isn't necessarily a traditional public forum, but because of some authority that the city has given, that it becomes like a traditional public forum. And because of that, you can't really regulate any content that goes on in the discussion. The next one is a limited public forum, and a council meeting is a perfect example of that. People have a right to speak, but they only have a right to speak about things that you actually have jurisdiction over. They don't have a right to speak about going to the moon, they don't have a right to speak about something that's happening in the school district, they don't have a right to speak about, they can if you want them to, but they don't have a right under your, under your limited public forum. And then a non-public forum is an area that you have absolute control over what you can allow people to say, do, and whether you can allow them to say anything. And it's those places that aren't, the purpose of them aren't to serve a public speech need, it's to provide the services that a city does provide, like City Hall and fire stations. And as I said, the right to free speech depends on the forum. So, to repeat, if it's a traditional or designated public fora, then the courts give it a very, very significantly strict scrutiny. They require that it, whatever the regulation is, it be the least restrictive means to meet a compelling state interest. So, there has to be a really, really good reason to do it, and the regulation has to be the minimum that you need to accomplish that. And the compelling state interest is not one that I think or that you think, it's one that a court has already said is a compelling state interest. So, it's very limited. And any time you try to regulate the content of speech in a traditional or designated public forum, you're going to lose that battle. The courts don't, just don't like content regulation in a traditional or designated public fora. Limited public fora, again, like a council meeting, as long as the restriction is reasonable in light of the purpose of the forum, meaning it's a council meeting, so obviously what the discussion should be is things that you can do something about. However, they can't be only allowing people who want to say good things about what you're doing, people who couldn't come up and say that you're doing not a good job. So, it can't be, it has to be viewpoint neutral, but it can be limited to things that only you can do something about. And then again, in the non-public fora like City Hall or a police station or fire station, you can do anything that's reasonable. And the reasonable there is pretty much in your discretion as to what's reasonable. You can't be discriminatory, but you, as long as you're reasonable, you're okay. So, it's a very, your restrictions are not limited at all, basically, in a non-public So, looking at your city rules and your municipal code, you've created a limited public forum for your council meetings because you've said it's to follow the Brown Act and it's to fall to only have people able to discuss things that are within your jurisdiction. Now, there's a rub as to what that means within your jurisdiction. There are some city attorneys who believe that within your jurisdiction is very broad, and others that think it's not as broad as being able to talk about campaigns. But there are some city attorneys that think that even someone coming up and wanting to say that they're running for an office in the city, that that's within your subject matter jurisdiction because obviously it's an election to a position that your city I don't believe that, and there are cities attorneys who concur with me, because then my, in my head, it's, well, isn't the state senate who represents your district also something that's relevant to your jurisdiction, as well as an assembly person or a congressperson or a US senator or the president for, also has an effect on your jurisdiction? So, that seems to open the door very widely. If you continue to allow public comment regarding campaigning, I see that as being inconsistent with what your current rules say. That doesn't mean you don't, you aren't, you couldn't continue to do it, I just see it as being inconsistent. And because of that inconsistency, and what drives me to want to discuss this with you is, if you start to treat your limited public forum as a designated public forum, you can't, remember, you can't limit the content of what the discussion is during that presentation at the podium. So, if someone wants to talk about some state initiative that has nothing to do with the city, you wouldn't be able to limit that. If you allow any kind of political speech, you have to allow all political speech. So, that's what caused me to want to advise you. Again, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I just felt the need to tell you what my concerns are so you can make a fully informed decision on what you'd want to do. So, I see two options. The first option is to affirm your current policy, which is have people speak about things only within your subject matter jurisdiction. And the other is to broaden your policy to allow this limited public forum to become a designated public forum. I guess, as I'm, was listening to a speaker, and I'm thinking now, maybe there's a third option, and maybe that's the, if it ain't broke, don't fix it option. You could determine that you're going to keep what you have, which is subject matter jurisdiction, but you're going to determine that subject matter jurisdiction includes city campaigns, but not any other campaigns. I don't know if that will be successful if someone came in and wanted to talk about some other campaign, but at least I could make a straight-faced argument to support So, the next steps are, you don't have to do anything, or if you want to have this be a designated public forum, then my suggestion would be to have me come back with some language from your policy and your municipal code to create that. Again, if you do that, this is the part that maybe because of your history here, that it never has been a problem, maybe it won't be a problem, but I just needed to tell you that it could be a problem. So, that's, the recommendation is to ask questions of me, listen to the public, and then make your decision.
Okay. And we'll go into council questions, public comment, and discussion, as was noted. Mr. Padoni, how long have you been practicing law as a city attorney?
Since 1980. So, that's 36 years. Wow.
Well, thanks for that. So, interesting, I appreciate the staff report, and I'll get on to comments later. But, so, along with that, how many, you know, you've referenced other city attorneys who you've discussed this with. And, you know, you've brought this forward to us and saying, hey, I feel compelled to advise you, not only as a professional, but as one that's been practicing law as a city attorney for, how many, 30 years?
36.
Okay, 36. So, I, you know, I imagine that is, was, you know, that practicing and advice comes with sincerity and thoughtfulness. So, I'll just stop there and get to my discussion later. So, any other questions to my left? Matt? Matt, go ahead.
You're welcome.
Okay. Joe, I have come, in terms of the question about the limited public forum and the way that it exists now, besides having speech that may or may not, may or may not go against whatever the council is seated at that particular time and that epoch or whatnot, is there any sort of legal ramifications of continuing with the way it is and not having any sort of designated wording in municipal law that says, "We will allow this," and just letting it go as it is? Are we, could we be beholden somehow?
I don't think so. I mean, you can't restrict now people coming up to the, no matter what, whether it's a limited forum or a designated public forum, you can't limit people from coming up and saying, "You're doing a bad job." So, that, if you, if we left it as a limited public forum, that could still happen. If, if you continue to allow, as tradition has allowed, people to campaign from the podium, as I said, I could see us making a straight-faced argument that says, "But that's only for city-related types of campaigns." And then, since it's never come up before, maybe it'll never come up again. But if someone else wants to talk about something else, some other political thing, we probably should sit and just listen and have them leave, rather than try to stop them because it'll probably be messy.
Okay, I guess that's what I was leading up to, someone taking the wrong, getting the wrong of sense of what we were trying to do, if it wasn't. Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Christine?
So, in your past experience, if this comes up a lot, you see people campaigning, or is this, are we, is this a little unusual here? Our traditions?
I'm not going to comment on whether you're unusual, but I will say that this is the first city I've represented where someone came up to the podium and said they were running for election in the city.
In 36 years?
Uh-huh. That doesn't mean that it doesn't happen, I just haven't experienced it. When I spoke to, based on a question that Councilmember Johnson asked me, when I spoke to, or emailed and communicated with all the city attorneys and the county attorney in Slow County, they all indicated that they understood the concerns, but they just sort of sit back and don't try to fix what's not broken. My words, not their words. So...
Got it, thanks. Thank you. Thanks for reaching out to the others.
John?
Thank you. 36 years of extensive pain, yeah, pain, knowledge and understanding of the law. What liability does the City Council have if we continue to do business as usual per this practice? You rewrite the policy and the practice continues. Are we subject to any liability issues and/or other types of problems?
If the council decided to just continue what historically and traditionally has been done, the only liability would come is if someone came in and tried to stretch that political speech to something else, and you tried to stop them, and they sued you, they may be successful in that suit and you don't have to pay their attorney's fees. But in terms of other kinds of damages, I don't see that. Any kind of personal liability, I don't see that.
Tried to stretch, could you interpret, tried to stretch?
If someone wanted to come in and make a speech about pro-abortion, or anti-abortion, or pro Ku Klux Klan, or anti-something else. And again, historically, we've never had that happen, so maybe it won't happen again.
And if I understand correctly, then that would also open the door to county, state, national politicians that may want to come before us and make the same types of announcements.
If you continue to allow, excuse me, if you continue to allow local campaigns to happen in, at this podium, then yes, there's that possibility. But again, the city's been a city for 52 years, and it hasn't happened for 52 years, so...
Yeah. And my last question is, then, I, I'm assuming from what I heard you say about making other statements that are political, that it opens up the door to literally any individual's interpretation of what they may consider to be a political statement, and they can come forward as per our policy and have the podium and literally, on any initiative, on any ballot initiative, on any senate bill, on any, any issue that may be out there that's politically motivated, have the podium and make statements.
That's the unintended consequence that I felt I needed to bring to you.
And that could, I said in my last question, and that could significantly tie up council's time with regard to doing the business of the city with a large number possibly of individuals that want to make personal statements about political issues.
Yes, the only, if that's what, if that's what ended up happening, and a court were to determine this is now a designated public forum, the only limitation you could place is on the amount of time each speaker was able to speak, or you could even say, "All speakers only have 10 minutes to speak at the beginning of the meeting."
Thank you.
No, no questions? Okay. Open up for public comment. For those who'd like to come, please come forward.
Hi, Council, David Nelson, 10 o'clock at night. I stayed here, I obviously am passionate on this. I appreciate you being an attorney for 36 years. I've been coming to this microphone for about 20 years myself. I've heard it all. We've had every state initiative, one way or the other, at this microphone. All the people out there are part of our community, we want to share our thoughts. I haven't used it really for political reasons, but I certainly love being up here and saying what I believe and who I support for our city government, and it's been that way forever. And there, the only problem is, and I wanted to thank Christine for bringing this up and jumping up for us, because it's just the way it is here in Morro Bay. Three minutes, and a lot of times if the room's filled, you get two minutes. Who's it going to hurt? This is democracy, we can come here and talk. When you open up public comment, talk about anything that's not on the agenda. Great, that's what we do, that's what we've always done. And to even think about changing it is, really upset me when I heard that, I was watching it on TV, I hope you heard a cheer, because I said, "Yay, Christine," because somebody stood up for our city right there. And you're not wrong, you're probably right, but this is Morro Bay, and this is the way we do business here. And there are other attorneys that believe that the way we're doing business is just fine. So, I mean, if it's a conscious thing, you know, we... So, I mean, if it's a conscious thing, you know, we find another attorney, I guess. But I appreciate who you are and what you do, but, you know, I was really seeing red when you made that statement, and I understand that you're doing diligence and doing your job, but I certainly hope that you do your job and keep this open for the public. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Joe, thanks for bringing it to our attention and the community's attention. Your 36 years of service. Christine, thanks for agendizing this and really bringing a new education to the community. Granted, David, as you're saying, coming to the mic for 20 years, we've always done it that way, this is the way Morro Bay wants to do it, but it certainly is part of democracy to have that discussion, and we had it tonight. Interestingly, we, whether or not we have a full room and we say, hmm, you know what, based on the room, how many people are going to speak tonight, okay, we're going to, we're going to change public comment to two minutes so we can get everybody in. And thanks for recognizing that, we've done that. Also, one of the first things that was done, at least when I came on council, was changing the public comment policy with council support. You know, for a while there, it was, you had three minutes to speak at the beginning of the meeting for everything on the agenda. That's it. Except for a public hearing, because I think by law that's, that was required. But for the most part, if there was three things you wanted to speak to on the agenda, you had to split up to one minute each. You know, this, it was changed with council support, and now we have three minutes of public comment for every item on the agenda. And I think council is also pretty wordy in our, in our comments as well. So here at 10 o'clock, as we're talking about a course of business within, within the city, I think, you know, to a large extent, you know, we have longer meetings, we have robust, thoughtful discussion, we have three minutes public comment for every item on the agenda, and granted, our, you know, our meetings have, have gone a little bit long, and we're looking, as I'm looking up at the clock. So, you know, as I, I want to defer to council members to make comment on this, you know, I've got no dog in the fight either way. I, I think it was great, Joe, for you to come up and say, hey, look, you should be rethinking that. I think that's great. Absolutely. And we're here to do city business. You know, and I know there was some discussions, at least at the Board of Supervisors at one time, on how business was being discussed there, because they wanted to discuss business, and public comment became a little bit different. So, as I continue my conversation, I'm going to reel myself in and conclude, so we can get on to city business, not that this isn't one of those, but we can wrap this up. I don't have a problem in staying, you know, continuing the way we've been doing it. Joe, certainly appreciate you bringing it up. I'm glad we had a respectful conversation about this with public comment, and, and though it might have alarmed some, Mr. Nelson, you know, at least we were able to come here and have a civil discussion about it. So, that's part of it. So, I'll look to my right. Noah, maybe you can continue on.
Okay, sure. And I do just want to kind of follow up on what you said, because I think we have established a tradition here in Morro Bay, and, and I have seen it all, I would agree with Mr. Nelson. And to be honest, it's one of the things that got me interested in city government in the first place, was public comment and how many interesting things, and what a public forum, public comment can be for particularly a small town that doesn't have many outlets. So, I, I see that, and then I also, as I'm looking at this, I know, I know Mr. Pononi's looking at this from, from a very nuts and bolts, practical perspective and, and fresh, and even noticing, I've always read at the, at our agenda, as it's printed, the public comment item, any comments not on the agenda. And, and I've read it just kind of like by habit, but if you read it, it actually says, on city business matters, not on the agenda, which, that was kind of caught me by surprise when I was preparing for this. And, and I think it's probably one of those things where we have these rules on the books, and we've been trying to go through a lot of them and, and look at them again and make sure that they're still practical and, and reasonable. And in some cases, we're adjusting them, and in others, we're not. But as I'm looking at that, I'm, I'm seeing where you're coming from, Mr. Pononi, on the real basics of, of why you would recommend against this, and, and mostly because we don't want to have rules in place that we're not respecting, because that's not a good policy in itself. So, just from, from my perspective, though, I think traditionally, the community has been fairly good at policing ourselves in, in the conversation, and at times when the political season is upon us, there have been obviously a lot more public comments and some discussion about specific campaigns off of city business or other initiatives. I'm not sure that we're going to be successful in trying to reel that in. I personally am not comfortable with, with trying to do that. I think if we were starting fresh from a city and we wanted to talk about it, you'd probably want to keep it cleaner, to be more businesslike, but I just don't think that's realistic in this case. And generally, for the most part, yeah, we've probably spent some time on items that really the city can't have much effect on, or probably shouldn't be mixing with the business operations of the city, like the political side, but ultimately, I have to agree with some of the previous public speakers in the first public comment, that it, it starts to get very gray and challenging, particularly for, for yourself, Mr. Mayor, hard to draw the line, and when you do, I've noticed in other public comments and boards and so forth that I sit on for the city, almost every time you lose when you try to limit public comment. And it's just really not worth the, the struggle, and better to just listen, and, and for the people that are really interested, they can follow up on an action that outside of the city process, and if we find something that we need to act on, we can. So, I, I think I'd, I'd like to maybe hear about ways we should refine what we have here, looking at some of the different pathways Mr. Pononi's recommended, and clean this up so it's, it fits a little better, and most likely not make any changes to tighten up public comment.
Thanks, Noah. John?
Thank you, Noah, and I, and I agree with what you said. I guess I would be looking for some kind of middle-of-the-road, if you would, policy or ordinance that would allow us to continue business as usual, but if indeed, as you've stated, that quote-unquote on page 4 of 4, first paragraph, that this policy could open the door to every conceivable topic of non-commercial speech and would likely make it very difficult, if not impossible, for the council to conduct business, that would be a huge concern of mine. But I've not seen that happen, although my tenure is not anywhere near Mr. Smuckler's. I do believe that individuals should have the right to free speech, but the council has the right to do its business. And so, how that can be crafted with controls, I, I would be in favor of continuing the status quo.
Matt?
Likewise, Joe, I appreciate the report and hearing the minutia and history of it, and it's, that's educational, I appreciate that as a teacher. I'm being serious, I'm trying to think about what I can tell my high school kids now, and how telling, that they can't say certain things. But then, coming from city council perspective, I also like your imaginary number-three choice that what, that you didn't write up, keeping it, if it ain't broke, don't fix, you know, don't fix it. And so, if anything, and there's a big if there, if we were good to go down that, any sort of route in terms of clarifying this, this sort of understanding about public speech here in our meetings, perhaps some sort of draw-up of that third imaginary, one that you haven't yet. But with all that said, I do believe, Morro Bay, that people really do appreciate the voice at the microphone. And I, although I appreciate also that, you know, we could someday be taken over by, you know, a group of people wanting to talk about some far-flung issue, but it hasn't happened. That doesn't mean it's not going to. So I'm in favor of keeping it as is, and if anything, if we do come to some sort of consensus, Joe could put some sort of language in there about that speech being, some speech being, that particular brand of speech to city matters being allowed. Or not, because I really think it's a valuable part of our little eclectic community. So, that's it, thank you.
Christine?
Great, thanks, good conversation and good staff report, and, you know, I want to tell Mr. Nelson that, and no, I can't hear the cheers, I can only hear the boos, so I don't know what that means. I think that the reason I put, well, I know the reason I put this on the agenda and requested it, and we're talking about it, is because I think there was confusion in the community about what this new rule meant. And, you know, I really wish I had done it a little bit sooner, because I know during the last election in 2014, there were some ballot measures, and it happened then again. And I just don't think we, we had never had a chance to talk about it. So I appreciate it going on the agenda and getting support from council to do it, and in a perfect world, it would really be nice to just focus on the city business during the time when there are no elections. And I think that, sitting here from that perspective, there are things that you want to accomplish, and you set your goals with this council, and you move forward with this particular budget, and it would just be nice to have the chance to complete those things in that span of time. But reasonably, most, a lot of that span of time does include, you know, a campaign. So, I am following along with what the rest of the council has said, I, I feel like if it gets to the point where it's excessive, or it is, we've opened a door, Pandora's Box, and we're even having this conversation, kind of opens us up to different kinds of challenges that we don't really face right now. But I am thinking we'll just cross that bridge when we get to it, now we understand what the rules are and what the possibilities are for us. And just in general, when I was thinking about it, I was reflecting on what the community did tell us in 2014. You know, we did have a very long and drawn-out political process in the city. We had the June primary, and I went back and checked the numbers last night about what the turnout was and what the public really said. And I think what the public told us in November of 2014, when we campaigned for or against in Morro Bay, Measure J, which was to stop the primary in June and to go just with a general election in November, that the numbers were 49% voter turnout, which is actually quite high for a non-presidential election year. I think the state turnout was somewhere in, about 10 points lower at least. So you had nearly half the voters turn out for that election, and they voted 76% to get rid of the primary and stick to a November election. So, that closed the window for a lot of our political discussion, because we don't have an election now until November. I think maybe what I, for me, looking at that, I, you know, I'd just be conscious of all of us, that, you know, 76% of the population didn't want to talk about politics until we absolutely had to. Okay? So that, and that's a pretty resounding outcome for that. So, as I reflect on that personally, and, and, you know, to anyone who's considering this kind of activity in the next several months, you know, just keep in mind that the voters spoke pretty clearly, nearly half of the registered voters, which is a large turnout in any election. You know, three-quarters of them said, we just really want to keep our politics in a box as much as possible and, and do it when we need to, but then let it go back to the work of the city. So, I'm glad we had the conversation, I'm ready, I'm status quo at this point, too, and I appreciate the neutrality of which the present, the presentation was brought to us and everyone's public comment. So, that's it.
Thanks, and if you don't mind, I'll make a couple more remarks, unless there's somebody else. And, and a little bit prompted by Noah, when you're talking about what's on our agenda, and I actually thought about this prior to this meeting and was thinking about that. And so, David, since you're here, I'm not, I'm not singling you out, but, and just as an example, I think, you know, it says on our, it says on this that, all remarks should be addressed to council as a whole, not to any individual member thereof. And, you know, I, I was thinking about that coming in, and I thought, you know, there may be some remarks directed at Mr. Pononi, and, you know, trying to, trying to maintain that. And of course, in, in your remarks, you, you made some remarks directly to Mr. Pononi, and, and I chose not to, you know, make any corrections, you know, because, you know, the, the tone and the level of conversation was, you know, heartfelt, but that is part of the, the balance of, you know, anyone, you know, whether it's a chair of advisory board or mayor that's facilitating a meeting like this during public comment. And, you know, I just thought I'd point that out, but thank you for being so, you know, being respectful. We do, we did pass a resolution on civil, civil discourse, that the League of Women Voters were so nice to come and present to us, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm also reminded that, you know, maybe that's something we need to post in this facility, just to remind us. But those, those are my closing comments, and, and I, I think at this point, we're, we're moving with status quo, and I, I certainly appreciate Mr. Pononi for, for bringing this to our attention, you know, that's part of it and the discussion that we had. Are there any other remarks? Do we, I don't think a motion is necessary at this point, unless there's any other comments, we can move on to the next item?
Seeing none, great. We'll move on to item C4. Item C4 is the 2016 Annual Water Report and Draft Revisions to the Morro Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 13.2, and carryover of 2015 Water Equivalency Units.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have a PowerPoint, and I'm going to go over and grab the channel changer. Thank you, this is the 2015 Annual Water Report and Allocation of 2016 Water Equivalency Units. And I'm just going to go over the recommendations first and then go over some of the details of the report. Basically, to allocate the unused remainder of the WEUs from 2015, process the allocations on a first-come, first-served basis, based on the priorities in our general plan and local coastal plan. Require each new WE resulting from development in 2016 be offset on a two-to-one basis, providing retrofits for existing uses. The major change in this one, we escalated the cost of the WUs by the engineering news record cost escalation factor. So it went from $5,800 to $6,032. I'm, I should have wrote down what the percentage was, but that's the change. This, this next item is for us to bring back changes to the municipal code, so we're not in this situation again, passing the water allocations after the fact, and the same way we've been since the 90s, every year, passing the water allocations not in time to meet the year. And then, alternative is to not carry over any water allocations and pursue a moratorium on new development until such time as the state allocation for state water supply is at its 100%, and the governor rescinds the drought declaration, or the city develops significant new water supply. Some of the issues that I want to talk about is California's historic drought, don't really need to talk too much about that, we've been living it, reduced state water project allocations, the city's drought buffer, stored water, local water supplies, ordinance timing requirements, and the ordinance numerical methods. Make sure I'm still in sync here. Last year, we, we, the city has an allocation for $1,313- Last year, we, the city has an allocation for 1,313 acre-feet of water a year, along with a drought buffer of 2,290 acre-feet of water. You add those two numbers together and multiply them by the percentage allocation, and you get what the city will receive in state water. Last year, the city received 950 acre-feet from the state water project, down from 1140, and I should say 2014, not 2015. We used 138 acre-feet from the Morro wells that were treated through the Brackish Water System. An overall reduction in water, 95 acre-feet from 2014. That resulted in this year having a 92 gallon per person per day. Overall, water consumption, down 11% from 2014, and down 21% from 2013, which is the year that the state measures our water conservation goals. So the city of Morro Bay has a 12% reduction from 2013, so we're very much so exceeding Our residential water conservation rates ranged from about a plus 2% before the, last year, before the mandated water conservation, to a high of 23% reduction in July of 2015, as compared to 2013. Some of the things that helped that along is, through our water conservation incentive program, we distributed 40 rain barrels. Doesn't sound like a lot, but we're on our way. That's over, almost 4,500 gallons of water saved. We issued incentives for 20 turf reduction eliminations, which resulted in 13,152 square feet of turf removed. We issued 86 toilet rebates, for a saving from either 3.5 or 1.6 gallons per flush, down to 1.28 gallons per flush, and did 34 washing machine rebates. So we've had a very successful water conservation incentive program. Last year, the council allocated 115 WEUs. We actually issued .3 commercial, so we didn't actually build a new commercial unit, that's additions to commercial property. We added 18 single-family and 1.62 multiple-family. The fractional amounts there are due to, the multifamily is a fraction of a single-family unit, resulted in, that should be 19.92 allocations of the 115. In 2014, we actually used 23.37. 2016 Water Picture. State water allocation increased around the 1st of December, they gave an allocation of 10%. Mid-last month, they increased it to 15%, which is 540 acre-feety for 2016. We have, at the beginning of 2016, 1,947 acre-feet of water in San Luis Reservoir available. And countywide, there is about 7,300 acre-feet of stored water in San Luis Reservoir for distribution to the, us and to the other cities. Our projected water demand is 1,090 acre-feet of water. We typically will produce, depending on how long the state water project's down for maintenance, between 100 and 150 acre-feet of water from our RO facility that's tied into the Morro wells. And so the, adding all that together, and using our 1,090 acre-feated demand, would reduce our water and storage from 1,947 acre-feet, and this is not a typo, just the way the math worked, to 1,497 acre-feet to begin 2017 with. Use of the Chorovalle wells is very unlikely, due to high nitrate levels and low stream-flow conditions that we can probably expect through the year. We have a stream-flow requirement of 1.4 CFS, and we've only seen it during heavy rain periods, at times where we really don't need to use the water, and we have no storage capabilities, even if we could bump. Use of the untreated Morro Valley water is unlikely, due to still lingering high nitrate Municipal Code revisions that we think are necessary, and this is in addition, along with the date changes. The WEU calculations date from water use dated from the 1990s, and in the ordinance itself, it talks about, from time to time, we should update those WEUs, and we haven't done that since this was first developed in the early '90s. The municipal code requires this data, our water use data presented to the Planning Commission in December. City council will make allocations in January. Our data's not available until late January. Final state water allocations are typically not available till the end of February, and we recommend moving this to later in the year. We made this recommendation last year, but it, we had other things, other priorities that we needed to work on. So, nothing like giving yourself some deadlines to get this done by. We would like to bring a draft ordinance revisions to our Public Works Advisory Board at their meeting in March. Bring those ordinance revisions to Planning Commission, the first meeting in April. Have a first reading at City Council on May 10. Adopt ordinance revisions at City Council on May 24. And establish, kind of tipping my hand on what I want to do with the ordinance here. So, establish WEUs for fiscal year 1617, based on data from calendar year 16, on the June 26 meeting. And that's really, I think, a more workable plan, is to establish those WEUs at council in, on a fiscal year basis, but based on data that we had from last year. That gives us time to crunch those numbers. Some conclusionary items. Since reducing the number of WEUs that we used to allocate from, I think it was 230 a year, to 115 a year in 2006, 885 WEUs have gone unallocated. WEUs, water equivalency unit use, I should have spelled that out when I first started, has varied over the last 10 years, from 2% of what's allocated, to, in 2006, we actually used 33% of the units allocated. There are sufficient unused WEUs allocated in 2015, to probably make it through all of 2016, but at least until the mid-year, if we make this change. Between water stor, in storage, the city's drought buffer, the state water project will be able to supply the city's water demand in 2016 and 2017. The DSal and Brackish Water RO systems can also meet the state's, used alone without state water supplementation, can be used to meet the state, city's water demand. And just reiterating again, we need to change the code to reflect current water testing and timing of data availability. That concludes my staff report.
Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it. And any questions for Rob? Noah?
Yes, Rob, just wanted to confirm that, at the 15% allocation that's currently projected with the state, we will be pulling from our banked, unlimited state water supply.
Yes, it will, projected will start the year with 1,947 acre-feet of water, and finish the year with 1,497 acre-feet of water. So we'll be pulling, you know, about 500 acre-feet of water from our storage bank.
And when that bank's gone, it's gone.
It's gone. Or, if we get a heavy rain year, and San Luis Reservoir spills, everybody's stored water resets to zero.
Do you know what the current level of the San Luis Reservoir is?
17%-ish, I think.
Thank you.
But it's a huge reservoir, too.
Yeah, so, but the likelihood of that spilling over is almost, very unlikely.
Very unlikely. And it's not, this is a DWR thing, it's not an actual spill at the dam, it's a theoretical spill at the pumping station in the delta. If they couldn't pump water downstream, they consider the water spilt.
Okay. And then, just briefly, we have increased the offset for new units to two-to-one last year. You're recommending that we continue that, and that would be one of the arguments against a complete moratorium, even with continued drought conditions.
Yes. The offset does account for new development paying for its own water, basically.
Okay, thank you.
John?
No question.
Matt?
No.
Christine?
I just, just to, just to ask the same question, repeat the question that Noah asked. So, the 3,000 acre-feet, we, that was just like a one-time purchase. It's, and, and once we get into the spill, we're not, it's not like you see it recharge every year as rain comes in. So that was kind of, it was a one-time purchase.
The stored water?
The stored water.
The stored water is there, because we typically don't use our full 1313 acre-feet. So we're, before we started water conservation, we're using about 1,100 acre-feet a year. So that 200 extra acre-feet of water would be not pumped south. So it would, it built up over time in San Luis Reservoir. So we've been building up wa, wa, I don't know that San Luis Reservoir has ever spilled in DWR's mind. So we started this whole drought with about 3,000 acre-feet of water, and now we're down to 1,900 acre-feet of water.
So, so with, until we get snowpack measurements, would that change that 1,497 number? If we were, if there was snowpack measurements, and then they say, "Well, we could be going up to 30% or 40% next year with our allocation?"
So that, if we go up to above 33% of allocation, when you add our drought buffer to our state water allocation, multiply times the percentage, we get 100% of our water, and therefore, we're not using any water out of, out of storage. I think that's unlikely. DWR is being very conservative, and they're waiting to see what happens with later El Niño storms, before they change. I was surprised that they changed from 10 to 15%. I thought they were going to wait till later on in the year to do this.
Okay. Those are my questions. Since there are no more questions from council, I'll open up for public comment for questions or comments. No public comment? With that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Appreciate you bringing this back. Per the recommendations, we have four recommendations. The fourth one, provide direction to staff to bring back the revisions to the Morro Bay Chapter 13.2. Included in your report, you were saying there would be a timeline of March, April, and May. March being PWA, April being Planning Commission, and then May, council. So that basically is a doable schedule, and would fit into that number four recommendation, as far as what kind of direction you'd want from, from council.
Correct. In addition to those recommendations, I realize that there's a resolution here, and council would need to adopt that resolution, 06-16.
Actually, the recommendation says that.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll open up for a discussion, and see, you know, have council discuss the recommendations for the timeline for the municipal code update, any other discussions there. So I'll start down with Matt. Matt, do you want to have a?
No, I think the timeline, as you're presenting it, Rob, it looks like you're being proactive, and I think that'd be great to get it done, and playing, playing ahead, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
Christine?
I think this, we spent a lot of time on this issue, this council, last year, so I think we were pretty up to speed on it, and I think that it is important to time it better. We've only had 20 years to do it, so what's another few months? Let's get it done. I don't, I'm ready to move on from this one, I don't think I'll have any other discussion.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I'm also ready, and I think it's important that we all keep in mind that the drought is continuing, and with projections for a likely La Niña pattern coming next season, that this could extend and get even worse than it was last year.
Yeah.
So I'm just urging every, every resident to continue the great work that they've done, and that we have work to do internally to finalize our desalination permits and so forth, and keep, keep building on our portfolio, and we're committed to doing that, as you see within our goals.
Thanks, Noah. John?
Rob, thanks for all your work. And are the incentives all still in place?
The incentives are still in place. They're funded through a budget allocation, and then also through the INLU fees, also helps to fund those. And if I make, make just one editorial plug, based on your goals, it even makes, stresses the One Water Plan and the WRF Project even more important to us.
Good. And I'd like to, I appreciate the report on, on who's actually used the incentives, not who, but how many, and I would appreciate hearing that, more or less routinely, maybe quarterly.
And I just thought of, it's an item that we should probably add to our, my director's report in PWA, so you'll get that on a monthly basis, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we entertain a motion, unless, see anyone? I'll make the motion. So we have a recommendation to approve staff, recommendation and adopt resolution number 06-16, proving the following, and one would be to allocate the unused remainder of the water equivalency units as allocated in 2015. And the remainder of the staff recommendations, as listed in our staff report, items number two, three, and item number four would be to bring back our municipal code under the dates outlined in this, in the presentation by Public Works Director, Leivik.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Five-oh. Thanks. And now we'll move on to Item C5, Adoption of Ordinance Number 600, adding Chapter 8.17 to the Morro Bay Municipal Code regulating the use of expanded polystyrene products within the city, Public Works.
Thank you. I gave Ms. Burlingame a bye on this one, since it is a second reading. We reviewed this last time. Ordinance Number 600 was introduced at the city council meeting on January 26. This is the legally required second reading for a non-urgency ordinance. After second reading, by title only, and with further reading waived, it is recommended that city council adopt the ordinance, which will become effective on the 31st day after its adoption, and become operative on May 1, 2016. That concludes the summary.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open up for public comment. Anybody like to speak to this item, please come forward.
Mayor, council, I'm Janine Rans, with Sol Fumfree. I made some inquiries for your council, as well as Arroyo Grande, which passed their, their vote this evening, and they became the 83rd city. their vote this evening, and they became the 83rd city in California, near the 84th. San Luis Paper Supply is our local supply company, and they are more than happy to meet your business needs. And as they add to their inventory and get rid of styrofoam, they will be looking for and wanting to pass on to your businesses better deals. They want to accommodate your businesses, meet them where they need, and look for new supplies. Of course, that lets your businesses search for their own stuff, but they are more than willing and happy, and of course, hope to, because they're looking for business as well. I just applaud you for your diligence to this and cleaning up the environment, looking out for the, your marine life and the coastal cleanup. Kids came out last, two weeks ago, and they remarked a significant drop in styrofoam. So, hooray. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out and sticking through this. Any more public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And unless there's any other discussion, take a motion. I'll make a motion to staff for council to adopt ordinance number 600, an ordinance of the city of Mor, the city of council of the city of Morro Bay, California, amending the Morro Bay Municipal Code by adding Chapter 8.17 to regulate the use of expanded polystyrene products within the city and waive further reading. A motion and a second. Second by Mr. Heding. Any further discussion? All in?
I think, just think it's a testament to the community coming forward and saying this is what we'd like for our community and for councils all over the county to be responding is, is pretty great to be part of that movement, and I appreciate all the effort that the advocates have done, showing up at cities that they don't live in, so.
Any other? All right. Thanks. Thanks, Christine. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Five oh. Item C6, adoption of ordinance number 598, amending section 3.08.070 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to bidding. Mr. Pony?
Thank you. This is also a second reading of an ordinance that you introduced last meeting, and this ordinance basically clears up an inconsistency in the municipal code between emergency purchase procedures and the bidding process. And so the recommendation is as noted on the memo.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? No questions? All open up for public comment? Seeing none for public comment, I'll be back for discussion. If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion. Seeing no discussion, make a motion for city council to adopt ordinance number 598, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Morro Bay, California, amending section 3.08.070 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to bidding and waive further reading. Okay, we've got a motion, a second by council member Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Five oh. Okay. Item C7. Item C7 is discussion of homeless services oversight council's recommendation to declare an emergency shelter crisis.
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir. Take it away.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So this was sort of a late-breaking item. Staff report released Friday. Do not have a presentation, but we'll make a brief, I don't have a digital presentation, but we'll make a brief verbal presentation. So on the 2nd of February, the County Board of Supervisors considered a homeless services oversight committee recommendation and report, and the County Board of Supervisors took some action. At our council meeting two weeks ago, council member Johnson agendized this discussion to consider what the county did, and here we are to have that discussion. What the county did was to declare a shelter crisis for the unincorporated area of the county per government code 8698. They also formally requested that all incorporated cities in the counter, county make a similar declaration. They also made $10,000 available from the county budget for warming shelters and centers, and, and stated that community organizations, community organizations would apply to use those funds. They also requested that each incorporated city in the county make $10,000 available for warming shelters and centers, and they encouraged community partners and communities within the county to bring forward additional recommendations. And then they asked their staff to look at a couple of things, including why existing shelters are not being used to their full extent. So that is what the, the county did. A few, a few other notes, not in the way of staff recommendation, but perhaps additional information. A, a declaration of a crisis simply allows government buildings to be used as warning shelters. So declaring a, a shelter crisis opens up a, a portion, opens up the opportunity for a government building to be used as a warming shelter. Of note, the county has already approved this. They declared a crisis, and there is a county building in Morro Bay. So there's already a county building in Morro Bay that is, that could be used as a warming shelter. The county has a health and human services budget. Health and human services is typically a state and county affair, not a municipal affair. And the county did allocate $10,000 for, for this, as noted, I'll just put that in context, that's $10,000 out of their $200 million health and human services budget. With that, the staff does not have any recommendations, but, but you have the opportunity to have a discussion on what you would like to do and how you would like to respond, what you would like to do, and that could be related as a, or done as a response to the county's request that you declare a crisis and that you match their $10,000.
Great for that. Thanks for bringing this agenda item forward. We'll open up for questions and then public comment, back for discussion. Any questions either way? Okay, great. And we'll open for public comment. Anybody for public comment on this item?
Good evening, all. Nancy Castle, living treasure. My own sense is that the crisis has maybe abated slightly. The, the, there was a lot of energy at Monday night meals talking about, could we just stay here Monday nights if it was raining or really cold? Well, weather being what it is, it's now not raining, and it's not really cold. We did do some investigation. My co-coordinator, the Meals Linda, who was here earlier, went around to everybody at Monday night meals and very kindly asked them, do you have shelter? And then found out that there were about 15 people that night, which was two or three weeks ago, who needed shelter, who don't have shelter. And so the numbers in Morro Bay are not that huge. I think that there are volunteers in the community who would come and stay if this building were made available. One of the things I'd like to see done is perhaps look at facilities rental of this building, because this is really the easiest building to use for a warming station, I think, because I, I don't think the building's used a whole lot on Sunday night. So maybe there'd be two or three nights we could identify that the vets hall could be used. We could talk to the county, because I believe it's the old public health building across from the park that's being looked at as a county building. It's smaller, I think, than this space. I would appreciate it if you would say that there is a, a housing or a shelter crisis and, and go through with making that statement, because in reality, there is. Whether we really need it this year will be dependent on weather. And my recommendation, and I'm saying me, because I haven't really talked to other people and Eback and all of that, would be that it's open to anyone. Dogs are kept on the patio. It, again, it's open to anyone as long as they behave, and most of the people, all of the people who come to night meals really want to do the right thing. They want to help. And this sort of generosity on the part of the city, I feel confident would be, would be treated the same way. They'd, they'd want to behave. They'd want to be out of the, out of the elements. I do know that there are other shelters in the area that have that same criteria, but they do do a Meagans Law review of everybody who comes to stay. I'm not, Amy's not here to explain how that might work. I believe that one and other of the little closets in the hallway here is empty. It would be a place to store supplies, a certain amount of money to buy cots would be necessary. We could probably get donations of sleeping bags, which is what's needed. The woman who spoke earlier about how much-
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up.
I don't think it would cost very much. I think that it could be done very low cost, and I think there is support. And then if there isn't facilities for the city and the county for every night, then we go to the churches and ask the individual churches to take a night.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. And I'll look over towards Christine.
Yeah, yes, we'll begin. You know, I must be honest with you, though. I know we'd all love to get out of here in five minutes, but it is 10:55, and I think we should just pass them, like, I'll make, make a motion and go past 11, just so we can have a proper accounting of this. Thank you. Okay.
So motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And then motion carries.
Okay, great. But we're, we're still making good progress. Okay. Obviously, this came from me, because I am the city's representative on HSOC, and I voted unanimously with HSOC that we should bring this to every city and the county for discussion. So that was the initial vote. My role in that was, yes, let's talk about it, not promising one way or another anything. So then I did watch the board of supervisors meeting last Tuesday and heard their discussion and the public comment that was brought forward there, and, and now you see the results. They unanimously also said, yes, we have a shelter crisis. And then they specifically went into the things that the city manager expressed in the staff report that they, their motion included. So I'm just going to cut to the chase, really, rather than belabor it. So based on three years of my position on HSOC, I can tell you that there has been some progress made in the homeless situation. I can't say it's been a lot of progress made for, it's a difficult issue, and, you know, people come and go on HSOC, and the resources are what they are. But I will tell you, for this particular issue, you know, in Morro Bay, we do have something unique, and that's the Sierra Bay Alliance for Care, our loose network of grassroots helpers, volunteers that are helping our community here. We do not have, within our city, the ability to have, you know, social services here. That's just not what we have our capacity for. But what we've created is a really terrific system, and we've created a community resource connection office, which the city has dedicated in-kind funds for, well, actually, in-kind, we've given office space, and I, I know you know this, but I'm saying it, you know, for the, for the sake of the discussion, office space, the city in, the chamber building, well, it's the city's own building, that the chamber also has space in, so does the community connection, wait, resource connections offices, I always get that kind of messed up. We've given them phone line, we've given them computer, a thousand, and $1,000 this past year. They're asking for, this budget year, you may have seen the documents, they're asking for $5,000 this year, and they list out why they would like that extra bit of money. And from the feedback we've received from these volunteers, and they're all volunteers, even though they are in a city office space, is that, that they feel that they can do more with the resources. Imagine, they're asking for $5,000 for the entire year of serving people in need, and that's some people who are unsheltered, many people who have a home, but they have other challenges. They're helping those people directly every single day, and all they're at, and they did it this past year for $1,000 plus office space. They're asking for office space and $5,000 for next year. So if we are to mimic the county and give $10,000 for between now and the end of April, which is when the county's made their declaration, that's just, for us, our resources wouldn't be best spent in that way. Realistically, you know, I think that the county understands, although they didn't remark at this, they didn't remark on this at the end of their discussion, but, you know, clearly, their budget is quite a bit larger than ours. So to ask, you know, this, one of the smallest cities in the county just have the same exact dollar amount to match that, I just don't think realistically we can do that. And I think maybe if they had to reconsider that, they would understand. Globally, what's happening in the county is there are warming shelters, and a warming shelter is a short-term thing that you throw up when the weather gets bad, you, you know, you text people and people show up. So it's not a homeless shelter. There needs to be a discussion, a difference. So a warming center pops up when needed. And currently, glow, in our county, there are centers you can go if you're unsheltered, and there are five, and none of them are run by cities, and none of them happen in city buildings. So they all happen either, they're all run by a 501(c)(3), and they all have a facility that is not a municipal facility. And the only one that's using a county facility right now is AG, and they're using a DSS building. So, and that is for the shirt, the short term of this particular season. So the DSS facility is open, but Five Cities Homeless Coalition 501(c)(3) is operating it. So at this point, if you're looking for a model in Morro Bay, that's not what we currently have. We don't have an up and running church, like a Tascadero Bible Church, or I think Paso Cares has rotating churches. We don't have that. We have no church now that we know of that's open for this facility. So we would be starting from scratch. And if we're modeling on other places in the county, with, there is no city model for us to follow. And the DSS building that is being used in Aurora Grande, I followed up on that, that's unavailable to us in Morro Bay. Even though we have a DSS building, it's not laid out the same way. Now, I did, I was able to follow up with Supervisor Gibson and, you know, advocate for things in Morro Bay. I was able to advocate for perhaps opening the county health building. I did talk to the health director on Saturday of the county, and that's something we can investigate, opening that building. The other thing that's happening is these shelters are not currently full. Part of the struggle is people don't necessarily want to go, because there are some rules, even though, you know, you heard Nancy say she doesn't necessarily want these kinds of rules. There are rules, and some, you know, you can't take alcohol in, and you can't do drugs in there, and, you know, you, you, you just have to pretty much go in and sleep. And you can't take dogs, and just about the majority of them, except for caps, though, and they have, your dog can come, but it stays in a kennel outside of the actual sleeping facility. So, you know, to come up with kennels and dogs and blankets and all of that is, it's a challenge. It's not insurmountable, but it is a significant challenge to mobilize between now and April 15. That being said, if money's going to come from somewhere, it has to go somewhere. So who can accept funds? We can't give the funds to a well-meaning group of people, not that we don't trust them, but there has to be accounting and transparency for the money. So if the county were to say, okay, Morro Bay will give you $1,000, and Morro Bay gives $500, and we have $1,500, we need a 501(c)(3) to step forward and to be able to accept the money, facilitate the purchases, and turn in receipts. So I've been diligently reaching out to our Eback group. You saw some, two of our Eback members did respond, and agenda correspondence, you saw that their letters, and I have worked with Linda and Chuck and Nancy a bit, but very, with Linda Fied Allen and Chuck Stoll, back and forth for about a week on email. And I'm asking, you know, is there a particular group that can step forward? At this point, they are very committed, they are working on it, they don't have a committed group at this point to say, yes, we can do it. They don't have necessarily like a list of identified volunteers, not that they couldn't get it, but they don't have it today. And then we're just not sure about which building, this building, would it be the county building, who would clean up? And the last thing that is a hurdle for the county in all of these programs, even the ones that are established, their biggest hurdle is volunteers. They have a hard time finding volunteers. Why is that? Well, you know, it's hard to ask someone to come and stay awake the entire night. That's what, that's what you need to do. It isn't like you can bunk up, too. I mean, you have to be awake. The second thing is volunteers don't have proper training right now. Many of them feel, I just don't know what to do. So the county has created some training. I saw some of those trainings, so they would be available, but they're for things like bloodborne illnesses. You know, what do you do if someone starts to bleed? What do you do if someone is sick? I mean, these are pretty challenging, you know, and you have to have certain things on hand to manage that. It's a challenge. It's not insurmountable, as I've said, but to pull it together in a very short amount of time, it's, it would be, you know, I've been trying to see if we could do it, and I'm not sure we, we can in the way that the other centers are being run at this point. So training is, is a core issue for volunteers, and- And the other thing is, none of the, none of the current centers are at capacity. They're all struggling with volunteers. Matter of fact, Caps Low in the city of San Luis Obispo, they had volunteers coming. They've had to abandon that and go to paid staff. But they're paying their 501(c)(3) nonprofit people, they're paying their staff to be there because they weren't able to secure volunteers. So that being said, that's the status of it. So it isn't as if there's something that we can just pitch into and, you know, Santa Barbara County, you may have seen the editorial in the Tribune last week after the Board of Supervisors passed the Declaration of Emergencies Shelter. They talked about Santa Barbara has a different style. They contract out with a company who creates warming centers, and they do it for like $130,000. I mean, this is, it's not, again, it's not impossible, but it's just not happening in our county. So therefore, another option I haven't mentioned is transportation. So I did talk to Supervisor Gibson, he made some outreach to, I want to say RTA, I believe, to see, could people be transported to the shelters that are not at capacity now, perhaps in Atascadero, perhaps in San Luis Obispo? I did not contact Caps Low at this point. I haven't reached out to Echo in Atascadero to say, would you be willing for us to do that? I mean, you can't just assume that, you know, we can bring folks there. We need to coordinate that. But also, then we'll have to figure out where would be the pickup space. And then you're going to get feedback, as I know the volunteers did at our Monday night dinner, that people don't want to leave their items. The supervisors also heard that feedback. People don't want to leave their items unattended and go to the shelter. They can't take their, some of their belongings. They can only take so much, and they can't take their dogs. So I'm trying to speak as quickly as possible, just to sort of give you a real update, so we can make the right decision for Morro Bay tonight. That being said, having, you know, a balance of opinions in our Estero Bay Alliance for Care group, some folks you saw are not interested in this, don't think it's the right thing for Morro Bay. Some people want us to work on long-term solutions, which we are doing through Community Resource Connections. So that, given all of that, and that we don't have, you know, at this point, specific groups who are stepping up and taking it on, I would suggest that we do respond to the requests from the Homeless Services Oversight Council and the Slow County Board of Supervisors, that we do declare a shelter crisis pursuant to the government code, because it's clear that we have unsheltered people in our community. So that's, we can't deny that that's, that's the case. And that's also the case in the county. So we declare a crisis because I think what it does, it sends a message to the county that we definitely are a willing player, and we're a willing partner to find a solution in this part of the county. Now, right now, if you think our neighbors, who are they? Los Osos, Cayucus, what's happening there? There isn't anything. These shelters and these centers that exist are an AG, Slow, Atascadero, North County, two space, two, two locations in Atascadero and in Paso. There's nothing in Cambria, there's nothing. So if the county were to open something and they were to have it happen in Los Osos, well, then I think we would just want to partner, get our volunteers together here, you know, do our work over in Los Osos in a county facility that they may open. Perhaps there's a county facility they're going to open in Cayucus. I have not heard that that is going to be the case, however. The only thing I've been able to communicate about is could, if something were to develop here, if in a few, in a week or so, we have volunteers that are mobilized, could we then use the county facility that really doesn't have any, very, very limited use, according to the health director, versus using a facility like Vets Hall that does actually have quite a bit of use? And that, you know, could we get consistent days to use this facility? So I would suggest that we do declare the shelter crisis because it's just a sign that we, we understand the larger issue. And then we do, I would suggest, work with the partners in the city, as we are volunteers, as well as the county, considering options for sheltering people, either in the city or in county buildings. And then we, or through transportation to existing shelters. And then I would also suggest that we allow the city manager to, to work, to assess resources available here in the city, including working with the county to secure resources if we are to see mobilized volunteers. I think that's fair. It's basically having us take action tonight, but not having it come back again and just, you know, go to work in the community and see if we can make it happen. But I should say, it sunsets to be consistent with the county. It sunsets April 15. So then this is over. And then I think the larger conversation is talk about things moving forward. But I think Noah's probably going to want to talk about Eback and how we did have this warming center discussion in the past here in Morro Bay and what the results are. But I've said enough. Thanks.
Thanks, Christine. Sounds like Noah's can piggyback on that, then?
I don't have much to add. You'll be happy to hear. Christine has been definitely taking the lead on this, and I'm doing a, doing a great job. I would say that we did have, through the Estero Bay Alliance of Care, a subcommittee that was really interested in this, taking a look at the concept, I believe it was two years ago now, and then it was talked about briefly a year ago. And in each case, we, the challenge is definitely finding enough volunteers to put together a program that is, is safe and responsibly managed. I think we can do it, but I think what Christine's suggesting tonight is our most effective approach, is pass the declaration, open up that option, and then it's really up to the community to step forward and help propose a program that we can, we can discuss and look at and perhaps support with, with use of a facility. But this is not going to be something that the city should run. And I think the volunteers that we've talked with, some that spoke tonight, all understand that. So if, if we do go forward, and even if the, if, if an option is open just for one night, I would consider that good experience, good learning opportunity. If it doesn't, we'd be that much more prepared for next year. So I think the recommendation is good. I am not in support of allocating $10,000, though. I look at what value we're receiving from the Community Resource Connections office and think about the modest request that they've put forward for $5,000 for the entire year and what, what they're proposing to deliver on that. That's where our money's best spent and will affect and support and help the most people possible. So I think it's, it's responsible and important that the county do that, but we've heard just how big of budget they have available for this, and truly, it's their responsibility. So I hope they're going to step up and, and look at options for the North Coast, because I think we're doing a good job here. But we need to approach this regionally. And I think us making the declaration tonight is a step in that direction.
You know, this is, it's a huge issue, and I don't know the magnitude of it in Morro Bay, but across the country, it's a huge issue. And the root causes are the things that concern me. And what we're doing is putting a drop of liquid bandage on a cabbage one. And, and, you know, that's, that's good, that's fine, and that's dandy, and I don't mind, you know, starting that conversation. But I sure would be interested in, in trying to find out what the county is doing with regard to mental health resources that are sorely needed because a significant number of these folks are in great need of these resources. In addition to that, I just want to add that, and this is not to put fear into the minds of our public, but, but there are issues with regard to public health. Obviously, you mentioned a couple of them with these folks. Thusly, the training, the rules, the regulations have to be firmly followed. And so that's just, just my perspective. I'm, I'm very supportive of doing that. My heart is there. My, my health background tells me, you know, we need to help. I've read, you know, significantly about the issue, but, but the root causes, it just seems like everybody, everybody, many are just, just bypassing. And it's just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger and continue to be a problem. So I'd be interested somewhere down the line in hearing that conversation as well, as opposed to just putting the bandages on this as we're doing. So I would be supportive of it. Thank you for letting me to opine on this, and I do think it's an important issue, so.
How about you, Matt?
I think it's a great idea, and let's go with Christine's plan.
Short, sweet, and simple. Yeah, and it's, it's hard to add much more. Thanks for all the work. I know both Christine and Noah work hard on Eback as well as all the volunteers, so the right step to make. And a couple of questions, though. So I think there's consensus to go ahead and move forward on establishing the crisis. There wasn't necessarily recommendation to financially move forward on this. The county building, could you, could you talk a little bit about the county building?
Yes. What I would suggest we do is, I mean, resources available, I think, we're, no one's saying $10,000, right? But yet, there may be things that, if, if, if volunteers are mobilized, maybe there are, then we would know what it's going to cost. Right now, we have not even any baseline. So I would allow, you know, city manager to sort of work with resources available. And then also encourage, well, I will continue to advocate for the county to also allocate resources to an organization in Morro Bay that can be doing what these organizations are doing other parts of the county, right? So that's a financial piece. So I wouldn't be able to say $500 even. I just think we should leave it open and see where we go with it. But as far as the facility, it's, you know, I should have picked up the address, but it's on Morro Bay Boulevard.
I know where it is.
Okay, it's that one. Yeah, it's not the DSS building that is in, that is near Albertson's. It's not that building.
Okay.
Yeah, but I didn't get that confirmed. I just sort of advocated that direction, and I wasn't told, no. I was told, well, that might be a possibility, right? So I haven't fleshed that out.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, which building is it?
Oh, it's, it's a county-owned building on Morro Bay Boulevard.
Which one?
It is, has a flat front. It's near a law firm, near the vinyl store, across from City Park, maybe?
Got it. The brick front?
Yeah. So it's, it's, it would, it potentially could be available.
Okay. Did you have any, no? Okay. With that, then maybe we entertain a motion by you.
Sure. Okay, I'll, I'll read the first part, and then I'll just read, shall I reread it, and then we'll, okay, yeah. "I move that the council responds to requests from both the Slow County Homeless Services Oversight Council and the Slow County Board of Supervisors and declare a shelter crisis pursuant to Government Code 8698 through 8698.2, which sunsets April 15, 2016, and work with our partners in the city as well as the county to consider options for sheltering people, either in the city or, actually, either in city or county buildings, or through transportation to existing shelters. The city manager will work to assess resources available, including working with the county to secure resources."
Second. Okay. Good, good motion. Thanks for that. Motion, Christine, second. Jamie, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Comments?
Just thank you both for your hearts and your work. And sometimes I know it seems like it's tireless and meaningless, but a lot of us do, you know, think about it and care about it. And I, I'm seeing more needle exchanges in my business than I've ever seen in years. And I think that's just a sign, so.
Okay. Okay. All right, moving on to declaration of future agenda items. And I just wanted to discuss, one, as far as the Washington DC visit for the CMA Conference, and just wanted to bring forward a, I haven't done this before. Usually, we just go, we come back and report. I'd like to basically have an overall staff report that has the proposed agenda, maybe a little history of what we've done. Also, some, I've asked Eric with Dave to reach out to staff members for Senator Boxer and Congresswoman Capps to help us craft resolutions of appreciation since they're leaving office. So the combination of that would be in one staff report. We could discuss that in March, prior to the visit. And basically, as I said, typically, we, we go, and we discuss dredging, and it's a pretty simple message. But there are some other things involving NOAA Fisheries and, of course, the sanctuary. And so this discussion would allow a council discussion, not necessarily the mayor's, hey, this is what, you know, the message isn't coming from the mayor, but actually from the city, as it should be. I think in past, I've carried that with, you know, referencing the, the overall position of council. But I thought this year would be prudent to go ahead and have that discussion, so I wanted to have that. Okay, so we have support all the way across? Okay, good.
I support that, do. We've talked a little bit about trying to combine that trip and effort with lobbying for the WRF as well.
Yeah, I think it'll allow us to talk about that, and we can, so I think that's, that'll give us, you know, the opportunity to talk about that, too.
Okay, great.
Good? Okay, good. Anything else?
No. I'm briefly going to bring it up. I mean, I think we all from council did get a request from the Harbor Advisory Board. I think Matt brought it up earlier in the meeting. I don't want to let it slide by. I, did you all receive it? Okay, yeah. And I'm not really-
I watched it, saw it.
Yeah, okay. So they're asking us, they're asking us for something, so I wanted to just respond. Doesn't mean that we have to agendize it, but I thought, can we just discuss kind of what they're asking for and then decide if we want to agendize it? Or do you want to do this in two weeks rather than tonight? I mean-
I think we can just discuss the request and whether or not we want to agendize that.
Yeah, I want to recognize that we all received it. I think it's good to, yeah, recognize it. Okay, so, you want me to read it? Because it's rather-
We've all-
Yeah, you said, okay, but I just, they would like us to place on our agenda. I'm, I'm not exactly, they want us to go, I think the idea is, Matt will talk to it, speak to it, won't you?
Sure.
Okay.
As, Dave, as I was asking you earlier, in terms of Harbor Advisory Board, they're very interested in presenting other sides of the sanctuary debate. And as I brought up, and then Dave was talking about NOAA, and then the National Marine Sanctuary folks, being a governmental agency, they came forward and wanted to present. I think that's how you presented it, Dave, that, correct? So in the same way, and the reason I didn't bring this up right now is I was going to go back to Harbor Board and said, hey, you know, these, these other entities, the National Marine people and NOAA approached the city. So as Harbor Advisory Board, the National, for instance, I don't even know, National Fishery Council, you know, something like that, another entity presenting other sides of the point of view. And so I think I will go back, and if you hadn't brought it up, that's what I was planning on doing, was going back and, and or emailing the Harbor guys, folks, and saying, this is, should be the next step. And instead of council advocating, and because we're, in my perspective, we need to hear the different viewpoints instead of pushing for one particular side. So in case anybody else has a different suggestion, that's what I was planning on doing.
What are you doing, Matt?
I'm going to be contacting via email and or talking to the people in Harbor Advisory Board and saying, this is, instead of agendizing it, could you, you as a board, you know, approach the governmental agencies that could present the other side of the coin? And then we could, in an unbiased fashion, say, well, we've given time, due diligence to NOAA and National Marine Sanctuary, and vice versa on another side of the coin, unless you, any of you have, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I think it is good to go back and get clarity. I think you are the liaison to the board. I think you are the best one to go back and do it. You brought it up earlier. I thought you were going to bring it up tonight, so I thought I'd throw it in the mix. What I would like, I think what they're asking, what happened when NOAA came, NOAA, so awkward with you down there, is that the council-
It's always awkward. True with him down there.
It is always awkward. They, we, council specifically directed staff to work with, to go seek a workshop, a public session, basically, here from NOAA to present to the entire community. So what I wouldn't necessarily want to do is, you know, task the Harbor Advisory Board or, you know, Mr. Endersby with doing that same process, you know, maybe just with the Harbor Board focus. But if we're going to do it, it would be, you know, I guess, what I think they're asking is like citywide promotion of another series or another workshop. So I guess I wouldn't want to let, I guess I would just want a little bit more clarification on who, what, yeah, like, who, who would be coming?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
I'm sorry to interject, but it sounds like we need to put it on the agenda.
We're getting into a discussion, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you think we do?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so before I even say anything back to Harbor, then, for a future agenda item-
Well, I mean, you need to put it on the agenda if you want to keep this discussion going.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to request right now that we make a future agenda item, and to speak about Harbor Advisory Board's-
Harbor Advisory Request.
Request to have further presentations on the National Marine Sanctuary and its impact on, on perhaps a different part of the community.
Okay. We get support for that? Go ahead.
I, I support it. Hello? I do support it because, I do support it because I think it'll just continue to come forward, so.
Noah, are you in support? No? Christine? I'll support it. So there's three right there, and so we're, we're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. Okay, thanks. Thanks for your guidance on that. We're getting a little, getting a hairy eyeball, so to speak.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah. And with that, thanks, everyone. Good night. We'll adjourn the meeting at 11:18. Thank you.